Okay, it's eight thirty. We'll get going. Sorry to have preempted you. I'm supposed to listen for that first.
Okay, I'm gonna move to accept the agenda as presented.
There is a request for an addition from staff that the mail should have. You have that, Michael? Yeah. Are you here, Bill?
Yeah.
That was the email sent out by the administrator. Probably appropriately placed under fifteen between B and C.
You want to look at what you want to put in?
I'd say between fifteen A and fifteen, excuse me, between fifteen B and C. Is that what your vision of Michael?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna move to accept the agenda as presented with the addition of adding the executive session of fifteen A.
No, I'm versus between fifteen B and fifteen C. And it's to discuss personnel matter.
I'll make it my motion. Okay, move to accept the agenda as presented with the addition of adding an executive session between fifteen B and C.
Moved and seconded. Everybody's clear what they're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of December fifth meeting. December fifth? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, public comment. Is there anybody here or online wishing to make a comment? Seeing none, right? Right, seeing none, we'll move on.
I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, Commissioner's regular meeting as presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the A R P monthly report.
I'm gonna move to accept and file a mission broadband monthly report as presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. And any further discussion or comments, Michael, or all in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous. U T Eagle Island Fire and Safety Needs. Miller, do you wanna?
Yes. Yeah, this morning Eagle Island has no power, so Bill Ginn can't join us. But I told him I would give him a phone call and let him know what the outcome was. I emailed the Commissioners Attorney Seawagner's report. Basically, we can't use the existing TIF funds to fund Eagle Island Fire. Under the Public Safety section in both of those TIFs is very specific as far as what the money can be used for. So Eagle Island wouldn't fit in there.
So my question is, Mr. Wagner, seeing this? Seeing the the memo from Rudman to Miller?
That's my understanding, because I think he also forwarded it back to Miller.
You asking about? Rudman Wagner wrote it.
Oh, yes, but I'm sorry, Bill.
I don't think, I'm not sure whether Mr. Ginn has seen it or not, but I explained it to him on the phone this morning.
Yeah, I would just wanna make sure that Mr. Ginn sees this. And I'm wondering, you know, how complicated it would be to this memo from Rudman talks about maybe seeking change that TIF document. Is that a realistic option?
I don't know. The other option would be when discussing a TIF later on this afternoon, we could include the Eagle Island in that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Although the problem with that is, we won't have any money from that for several years.
Yeah.
We don't get money from the TIF until the project is up and running, then the first tax payment goes in.
So, I mean, before we move on, I would just wanna see that Mr. Ginn, I'm sorry of missing, mixing up names here, but I think it's important that he reads this. And, you know, maybe he'll have some thoughts.
I spoke to him this morning. He had no problem with the Eagle Island Association forming and incorporated volunteer fire department.
Okay, I think that's important. And then I guess one thing that we should know is, you know, is is seeking change one of these TIF agreements to allow this thing, which is now, you know, in current law.
Yeah.
Is that an insurmountable exercise, or is that very easy? If it's very easy, then?
I don't believe it is, but I'll get together with him and outline what problems is for you.
Another option might be to take the thirty thousand from the U T Fire Suppression Reserve.
Okay, so what's the balance of that? John asked, Miller, do you know what the balance is in that reserve?
I don't off the top of my head.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I haven't looked it up.
Okay, so those are all things that, you know, look at, come back and, you know, give us some options and.
And one of us, I'm avoiding us entertaining the idea of using CBA money for it. I mean, it's just like right now, we we're looking at that. Enough and too many other areas, so I don't wanna add something else that maybe can finally actually use some TIF money at some point.
My exact same.
Commissioners, we contract with a lot of towns, a lot of volunteer fire departments for fire suppression in the U T. And we do it through the U T budget. I don't look at this thirty thousand dollars donation to them much different as a contract with a volunteer fire department to supply fire suppression. So I think we could do it out of the reserve. We could budget for it next year and do it out of the U T budget.
There's another option.
Yeah. It sounds to me like you and Michael need to get together a little bit, do a little options list, see which way is the easiest way for us to go, because we have support from the Commission on it happening. It's just how it's gonna happen, how we, how much work is it gonna take to make it all come together?
Yep.
And for me, I'd like to see it come out of TIF funds, just because that's the biggest challenge, you know, you have, you know, that's those funds, so.
Right.
Okay, we ready to move on? Michael?
Yeah, table it down until we get back to you.
Yeah. Miller, you're, that's fine?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on. Next up is Town of Brooklyn.
I'm gonna move to approve the Regional Animal Control Agreement between the Town of Brooklyn and the Hancock County as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Miller, anything to add?
Well, just this is gonna be an annual thing.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the Regional A C O M O U between the Town of Brooklyn and Hancock County as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Anything to add? All in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the Regional Animal Control Agreement between the Town of LeMoyne and Hancock County as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the Regional A C O M O U between the Town of LeMoyne and Hancock County as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all of those have been unanimous so far. I didn't indicate that.
Commissioners? Commissioners?
Yes.
Is it just an F Y I? Last week with that heavy rain, we had a lot of road washouts, Nicatawash Road, Back Road, and Matt's Ridge Road. Matt's Ridge Road is the major issue, has got an estimate of probably between fifteen to twenty thousand to fix it. I just wanna let you know where we are, but my question is this is over the limit as far as what needs to go out to bid. But I would like authority to, this is an emergency situation, the road is washed out bad, I would like authority to get it fixed. We have money in the road reserve, reserve account to do it. If we wait and go through the bid process, it's gonna get much worse. The time factor is not in our favor.
Okay, so my guess is that you'll get together with Michael.
Generally accepted practice, usually emergencies or something like that, but if that's the decision to do that, obviously the Commission will authorize it.
Well, I yeah, my support, I don't know.
I'm gonna do a motion.
Okay.
Move to allow the U T Director to get repairs done to the Matten Ridge Road. Matt's Ridge Road. Without getting.
About the emergency repairs?
It's due to the emergency nature.
Perfect.
I'm gonna move to allow the U T Director to get repairs done on Matten Ridge Road without getting bids due to the emergency nature.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, Michael? Is that what you? Miller, you're happy with that?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Thank you, Miller.
Thank you, Commissioners.
E M A, do you approve the Hancock County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the twenty twenty-four update?
See, you don't, see around. I'm gonna move to approve the Hancock County Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand twenty-four update as presented.
Seconded.
And for Commissioners to sign, I guess.
Is there a signature date?
Yes.
Did it require all three or?
Yeah, all three.
Yep. Well, that's a given.
Yeah, that's what I approve again.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, seconded. Moving to seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 H R. First up is a letter of resignation from M D E A Deputy Christopher Thornton.
Yep, and that will be effective at the end of this month.
Retirement or letter of resignation?
It's a letter of resignation. It's a letter of retirement.
Letter of retirement as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Up to the end of this month, correct.
Motion there, Bill?
Yes. Effective when?
I think it's twenty-nine. I didn't print it off.
Twelve twenty-nine to twenty-three is what it's.
Okay, I'm gonna move to acknowledge the retirement of Christopher Thornton on effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and to thank him for his service.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. And any further discussion? I just wanna wish him the best. I don't know Mrs. Thornton very well. I've seen him in here a couple times, and I wish him luck. Congratulations. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. What first compact? Funds for training.
And so, per the request of the Commissioners last time, I've created a new memorandum to answer the questions that you had. And I've also had Christopher Young, who is from the Compact, to answer questions about it. The form itself for signing up for the Compact for the county is all electronic, so we don't have a paper version of it. I did send you a link to it so you could see what it looks like. But what I'm looking for is permission for us as a county to fill out that paperwork and to begin the process. But I do have him with me for questions concerning it.
Yeah, what you had to pack here?
Give us a short synopsis.
I will sit down and then the PD will get it.
Yep.
It's more choice.
Hello, I appreciate your time this morning. Good morning. My name is Chris Young. I work for the Harold Alphon Center for the Advancement of Maine's Workforce. Our funding comes from a different, a bunch of different pots. There's some federal departmental labor money, there's some state Main Job Recovery Act money. And a big chunk of our money comes from the Harold Alphon Foundation, who wanted to get out and train Maine's frontline workers in all positions, municipalities, counties, schools, businesses, nonprofits. We deal in all those areas, and we have compact members in all those areas. Other counties that are nearby that are also already compact numbers, Knobscot County, Waldo County, Knox County, Arusta County, and then most of the ones in Southern Maine are compact numbers. So, and I just, I know you had questions about the trail of money, like who can request? And then how does, how do you guys get to see that? So I think what we really tend to say is, we don't wanna spend additional money of yours. You already are doing trainings. You're doing trainings for your sheriffs, for your, I'm not sure if the court falls under budgetary, but you're doing training for your people in the jail, for your emergency telecommunications people, all those people. You're already doing trainings. What we're saying is, we don't wanna pay half that, no strings attached. So, in terms of funding trace, if Mary Ann is that person, she would do any request of any of those departments. So, you guys, those people would still sign up for the training through the trainer. We're not gonna pay the vendor. We're gonna reimburse Hancock County. So there'd be trainings you're already gonna do, and then you submit a request to us. Mary Ann would submit the request. Mary Ann would get back the approval. And even if she shared a link, because she, you know, she was working with the sheriff, even if she shared a link so that the sheriff could submit a request, she gets back depending approval. So everything is, it's gonna only come to that one person who you indicate on your membership form, as seeing that situation take place. We typically, depending on how quickly you've applied for the money, we typically send you eighty percent upfront. And then the remaining twenty percent is contingent on the people who participated in the training completing a survey. And that's for data for the Alphon Foundation. Everything from, I think I included in your pamphlet, we have an emergency telecommunications program. It's free. So a lot of the stuff we do, so we have free training, completely for zero cost to the employee, zero cost to the employer. We also have compact funding, which is what, you know, I just went through how that would work. And then addition to that, as a compact member, any Hancock County employee would be eligible for up to two half tuition credit courses at any community college in Maine. And that doesn't even run through you. It doesn't touch any of your money. You send us a list, names, addresses, emails, emails verifying that they work for the county of Hancock. And then we send the scholarship to the college they wanna go to.
It's a continuing education.
It's a continuing education for your employees. It's upgrading their skills. It's helping support the training you're already doing, knowing that budgets will begin to get tight. The funding is originally scheduled to run out at the end of two thousand twenty-five, although the Alphon Foundation asked us specifically to apply early and for more money. So my feeling would be they wouldn't necessarily do that if they didn't like us. But now, any quick questions that you have that I can?
Who specifically in Hancock County, and this may be more from Mary Ann, is eligible to apply for these funds?
Any business in Hancock County. The city of Ellsworth is a member.
No, 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 excuse me. I'm talking about employee.
Of the county.
Of the county. What employee?
The scholarships could be applied for by any employee.
I'm talking about.
Compact funding is only gonna go through Mary Ann.
This is a twelve hundred dollar.
Yeah.
Who's available for that? Who's eligible for that, Mary Ann? Everybody?
Everybody, part-time, full-time.
There are all of our employees who need training. Who are, and I guess that's the other question is, is that who determines what training they will get?
We do.
In other words.
They're already getting training, right?
Yeah.
I know, but what if an employee, let's say, I wanna sign up for a welding course at Tech Center? Is that eligible for funding under this?
That'd be your decision. I would, we would pay for it if you said to pay for it. So everything comes from you. We don't second-guess any decisions you make. So again, the contact person, if you decide, is gonna be Mary Ann. She's gonna be the one to submit and then to receive any additional information back from us.
So Mary Ann, you get a corrections officer said, I'd like to take a adult course to Tech Center for welding. Cost of that thing is twelve hundred bucks. Is that something you would approve?
No, because it's not benefiting the Corrections Department.
Okay, so that is the criteria for improving this?
Yes.
So if somebody in another department said, I wanna take a course in basket weaving for a thing? No?
I mean, if it's improving what they're doing in their department, if it's something that if, I'm only going to be approving things which will be training that would improve their outcomes and that department itself, so I'm looking more at stress management or improving, going to be able to go to a conference so that they can learn new techniques and bring those back to share with other people. I'm not, that's what I'm interested in.
Isn't it for training within their departments that they're already taking?
That's what.
It's basically for training within their department. If the Corrections Department has behavioral training they wanna send people to, this is a twelve hundred dollar buy-in to the training.
But if a corrections officer said, you know, I find, I'm irritated all the time by inmates. I wanna take a anger management course. That would be something you'd have to scrutinize, decide whether or not that's acceptable?
Right.
Are you the final authority for deciding?
Well, that is, so my goal for doing this, my goal for doing this is to have it come through me so that there's one person being the person who creates the Excel spreadsheet that manages it, and make sure it gets to Monica so we don't have, like, seven people doing it. So we're trying to just narrow it down.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm trying to head off controversy down the road where you might get a request that perhaps you personally don't feel fit. And that employee says, oh, I think it fits. You say, no, I don't think it does. Now, what's gonna happen?
I think we should, I think we should hardly create a rubric and a rubric for it that says, you know, is this gonna benefit the department that they're in? Is this a training that already pre-exists? Is this something more people would like to take than perhaps it should be not an individual, but a larger group of people from that department that will benefit from that experience?
And lastly, as we know it's not gonna happen, but with over a hundred people in county government, it is, that's a sixty thousand dollar expense in one year. Where's the money coming from?
So we're going to be, it's going to be things that they're already scheduled to do. And that would become a savings for the county. So for instance, if it costs six hundred dollars for them to do, in corrections, you do a safety, a hands-on safety kind of curriculum. And if we needed to bring somebody in for that, and it was six hundred dollars, they would pay half of it, and we would then pay it, we would be reimbursed.
So it's the idea that it would come out of each department's training budget, like the portion?
Right, correct. Their current training budget. And then they will have extra money to increase the amount of training that they have.
So my understanding is that this is, this is training that we're already doing.
Correct.
And is already required of us to do.
Correct.
A lot of it is probably required. And then, and then adding a piece that we don't currently have, which is the continuing education piece, that if that person wanted to take
Yeah.
something like that, Mary Ann wouldn't be involved, because then it's a continuing education.
So the individual that wants to take the welding class?
Yeah.
It's just one individual, so it's not really a department thing?
Yeah.
What she could say to him is, here's the pamphlet on the scholarship?
Yeah.
County's not involved with that, but because you work for the county, you're eligible for this?
That's right.
It's a half-tuition scholarship, so you can take a welding course at E M C C, or if you wanna go over to W C C. And the person in the, I think it was the sheriff, she said it was maybe dealing with anger management or stress management. If it wasn't a group thing, same thing, you know, the course is offered at E M C C, but maybe you only have one person, so we're gonna give them a scholarship.
And that's, as I understand it, that this is not just public entities that are part of your compact. I read, I read some of the material that Mary Ann had in the packet, and I Googled it. They they're private entities, companies that participate, and that's how they're.
Hancock Lumber, Jackson Laboratories, again, City of Ellsworth, Ellsworth School Department are all compact members, have been compact members. City of Ellsworth puts through a ton of requests for us. And again, I don't think they're adding new trainings.
Yeah.
I think they're using us to pay for what they, you know, sending somebody to the police academy or, or in my case.
And that's okay under the compact, but you take a scholarship program that they're eligible for now. I mean, how many corrections officers out there would like to find a different job somewhere? Christy, you're losing. And a guy says, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to learn how to weld. I can learn how to weld. I wanna quit. Now, why would we sponsor a program that makes it easier for existing employees to leave and go to another field?
But we're not sponsored.
Sure we are. We get involved in this program. That employee now qualifies for its free scholarship.
It's not free. It's half tuition.
Well, I mean, it's freedom, because that's anything, but because we're involved in the program, they can get involved in that.
I mean, I might wanna take welding. I, anybody can apply. I might wanna take welding. It doesn't mean I wanna leave the county. I'm just, it's just extracurricular, outside, like, adult ed.
There's some individuals, I'm sure that were here, that never finished community cause. They were like, you know, they were working along, family or whatever, and they were like, I don't know, three classes, four classes away. What you can say to that person is, continue your work here. There's a scholarship available, and you're confining on that associate's degree.
Yeah.
That you always wanted, but you just couldn't get back to.
No, I, I, no, I've seen programs like this elsewhere. I support this.
Yeah.
So Mary Ann, what would you like to see as a motion to approve this?
Um, I, what I'd like to have is a motion is that to have me complete the paperwork or the online application so that we can access this resource.
So join the compact?
To join the compact.
That's what I mean.
Officially for us, how you do that, it's up to you, but from us?
Yeah.
Move to join the compact?
Harold Alphon Workforce Compact.
Move to join, is that, is that the word?
Harold Alphon Workforce Compact.
Yeah, but I'm just curious. Join is the right word. Move to join?
To apply for the compact.
Move to.
Authorize H R.
No. Move to apply, what is it, Chris?
Harold Alphon.
To the Harold?
Alphon.
Alphon Workforce. Workforce Compact. Simple as that?
Yep.
Move to apply to the Harold Alphon Workforce Compact. Seconded. You got the motion, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maintenance. Request permission advertised for new skilled maintenance position.
So this was a position I'm including in the budget. Now, this request. Welcome to advertise for applicant.
Welcome to advertise for applications.
Right.
Yeah, I'm going to move to approve the advertisement for skilled maintenance position. Seconded.
Within seconded, that does it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Good. All of me, I wanted to say, you had a question about protrusions down at the job site. All of those are going to be finished on flush.
Isn't the one that's in the pavement?
Yes, they're, they're gonna, they'll be cut back and they'll do fitting put in there.
In hindsight?
Yes. They're well down. And they're supposed to be pouring concrete today, but it's been pushed off again.
Well, they're going to have a long spell, so.
Yeah. Hopefully it's later this week. Another week. We were scheduled last Friday.
Did they get the level parts done?
No.
They didn't get either one?
No.
Oh, I'm sure.
That's what they were, yeah. Last Friday was a real opportunity. And the prior, the storm on the prior Monday is what caused the schedule to be bumped up, but yeah, that was a really good opportunity.
This Monday, I was pushing it for another month.
Well, yeah, it's, and with respect to the power, we don't know what is going to be received. We will deliver a comment for our generator, so we should be.
We're operating right now on generator?
Yeah, yeah. Most of the city's out still. You know, they, they, it's solicitors under investigation.
Eighty-nine percent of the city of Ellsworth is not up?
Yeah.
Just found out someone.
So we're doing the best we can. Again, the annex is a real victim, the black hole.
Okay.
Some of them, we might talk about a generator another day. It won't happen today.
Thanks, Dennis.
Sure. Thank you, Dennis.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to move to approve the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport's 2024 operating budget in the amount of 918,220. Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Leroy is not able to be with us, Michael, we have anything to add?
He's right here.
Oh, yeah.
He came in on his phone.
I was, I was able to get technology to work with no power even, so I am here.
Wow, and that view is kind of spooky, but okay.
Dark in the back.
I know.
Here, if they got any questions on that budget, you know, it, it looked pretty good to me, but I don't know how it played out, you know, where. We got, we got plenty of reserves.
Anything, any questions or? Okay, so there was a motion and there was a second. Any further discussion, anything else to add, Leroy, Michael? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sheriff, discussion of timeline for to hire civil deputy.
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, the sheriff is stuck on the cake and not able to get in here. So he asked me to come up, I have to go over some of these items with you. The discussion on the timeline to hire civil deputy, the current civil deputy will be retiring in March and has.
Excuse me, she'll win in March. First to last.
I would say it's in March 13th, 16th.
Yeah. Since when his, that's when his vacation week run out.
In March.
Yes.
So right now, what we've got, Mary Ann's got the patrolman trying to help her sort of civil papers when they have time. She works with the lieutenants to help her get these papers distributed out to the patrolmen to have them served right now. When they have time, they're getting those served and we're filling in. When we have enough patrolmen to help, they pick up four hours of overtime a week in the civil department. So the sheriff is looking at seeing if we could start maybe doing some advertising in-house first to see. He's got two prospective people that are interested in the position. And was hoping to be able to fill that sooner than March if possible. And maybe one of those things where the line item is for the budget is overrun at the end of the year. But he just wanted to discuss about the timeline of getting, being able to advertise for that civil deputy position.
Because if I'm not mistaken, that civil deputy is not working.
That's correct, yes.
I'm going to suggest that he be allowed to advertise for a February 1st that date. Still there's some six weeks to.
So post it in-house and then work with Mary Ann.
Well, we need to. I'm not sure if you gentlemen agree with that.
Well, it seems like why not before that?
We don't have any money in the budget to pay two people to work three and a half months, two and a half months. But we didn't budget any extra funds in.
The sheriff was happy to be able to do something in February when I talked to his lawyer today. Yep, so he said February was perfect for him. That worked out good to give him time.
And I might take that wrong, question advertising, you found acceptable candidates and move forward with it anyway. It's, it's not an overnight kind of activity to hire.
And the job description is very specific. It has to be law enforcement and for that position too, so.
So I'm going to move to approve the sheriff to advertise for civil deputy to start February 1st, 2024.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. So that's a start date, not advertising.
I believe the advertising is now set.
Okay, great. That's right. I was confused.
Sorry, what did you say?
I'll second that.
What did you say? February 4th?
Well, I said first. You want to pick out Sandy Michelle in February?
Well, I mean, by the time, when's the first commissioners meeting in February?
Boy, that's a trick question.
Well, it's going to be the 6th, but.
The 6th, yeah.
I mean, he'll be able to come to us by late January with a.
Sure.
But I, let's, let's make the start date February 3rd, if we can do that. That's a Sandy Michelle.
Okay.
Gentlemen, my, my motion is just start date of January 3rd, so that we.
February.
I mean, February 3rd, so that we pick it up on a first day of the work week. I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion, anything to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up is discussion of purchase of a lot of a replacement vehicle.
Well, it's, it's, once, excuse me, Michelle, it's unfortunate the sheriff isn't here because I really would like to have talked to him about. My biggest question is, is why do you need it? It appears to me that he had too many vehicles when he, at the time he totaled one. If you look at the list, you will see that everybody in the patrol division now has a vehicle assigned to them all within the range of a suitable mileage range for that wouldn't warrant replacement. And if the sheriff came to us today, had it not been for totaling this vehicle and said, I'd like to, I'd like to buy a new vehicle. My first question would be, who are you going to give it to? I mean, even, even the officer involved in the collision and whatnot has now a a pickup with only 68,000 miles on it. That's a fully equipped marked unit. It has exceedingly three more years of use on it. So I'm going to suggest that we don't authorize a replacement. And if he wants to come back at the next meeting and make a pitch.
Well, is that, is that what Michelle, you being able to do that?
I'm here to make the pitch, yes.
Do you have his list?
I do have his list, yes. I do have his list in front of me. Currently, the officer is driving '08, the spare, the 2020 Chevy Silverado. Just keep in mind, he is a deputy, so he's going to be a lot of miles put on that vehicle.
Michelle, why is that a spare vehicle? 68,000 miles, a spare vehicle? That was Marizes, Mariza's, right?
Um.
She had that pickup for several, couple of years.
She was, at one point she was driving the Dodge. And then I'm not sure if this was Deputy McFarland's vehicle when he retired. No, it couldn't have been.
No, this is, this is Marizes, Mariza, I haven't pronounced it.
Mariza.
Mariza. This is Mariza's vehicle. And sometime after the, one of those new 23s came in May, he took it off the road and gave her a brand new one. Which, why did he do that?
So what we're currently dealing with, as you've seen from the memos that I believe the sheriff included a memo and an email from Malcolm Ulmer with Aron's truck company. The current payout that we're expecting for a check right now is $30,000. We are disputing that. Because the vehicle came fully equipped, we had some damage to the materials that were inside the cruiser. And that we, and we worked with Brown's communication. They could not get some of that equipment out as well. And because when we purchased the vehicle, we purchased it fully equipped with all the brackets and that for all the mounting gears and stuff, and we just can't even get to some of that stuff. So we have been going back and forth with Malcolm on the other rest of the damage of the vehicle. And we're waiting to see if we're going to get another adjustment. Check coming in the mail to, for some of the other damages that, from the materials that were inside the vehicle. And as far as I know, unless Mike has heard anything, I, we have not heard anything from Malcolm.
I haven't seen anything else and I haven't received a check yet.
Okay, so we are, we are disputing the check for only $30,000. And I sent Malcolm all of the breakdown from the sale of the vehicle that I provided the bill to Monica that had every item that we paid for in that, so that he could see how much everything, the breakdown was for everything. We're just having a hard time working with the insurance company to negotiate something more for the materials that we're still need to get replaced out of that vehicle.
So I'm going to suggest that they continue to confiscate as much as they can for that vehicle. That when the check comes and the final settlement is made, that that money be put in the cruiser reserve account. And that they don't replace that vehicle now. So is it Kramer that's driving?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. So they're driving the 2020 Chevy pickup?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's 68,000 miles, I mean, that averages 15,000 miles a year. And that's another 45,000, puts that up right where it should be as far as time to trade it. I mean, that was the whole purpose of buying vehicles that had a good trading and pickups where they, they lobbied that as one of them. Pickup with 110,000 miles on it's worth over $10,000 today. So this vehicle should stay in the frontline patrol. And should not be, the 68,000 should not be placed in, as a spare vehicle.
So my question is this, Michelle. This spreadsheet has a lot of names and a lot of vehicles. Are you short a vehicle right now?
Uh, right now, because we're using, as you can see from those, the Ford Explorers that we have in the spares that are over 100,000 miles on them. We, in 2024, we may be looking at getting rid of one or two of those vehicles. So with that being said, that will, that's going to only leave us, if we continue to keep that Chevy Silverado, we'll only have one spare available in the whole patrol unit. Which isn't going to be enough if we have vehicles out to, for service work on them.
And have we taken delivery of all the vehicles that we've purchased?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So there's no outstanding?
Nope.
Vehicle?
No.
So I guess the, it's not an emergency because we've got to cover it, but potentially we're going to need another vehicle if one of those is sold.
Well, we have, why, why are we selling them? I mean, two of them got 101,000, which is an acceptable mileage for, for cruisers, even though that's the Explorers, that'll last. And every, then remember now, every member of the sheriff's department has a cruiser assigned to them except Michelle and the civil process secretary. So I mean, you don't need a cruiser to go to the academy, you don't need a cruiser to go to training, whatnot. Everybody's got a cruiser. And on top of that, in 2024, the first four months, we're talking about one of the deputies out from spending extended period of time with a medical issue. We've got another one that's in the academy for four and a half months and whatnot. We've got to try to replace one of the deputies that's retiring and who knows what else is going to happen. I, I think the biggest problem for the sheriff is not going to be a lack of cruisers in 24, it's going to be a lack of deputies to fill those cruisers. And today, they do not need it. If they, if they bought that now, we'd end up having it parked in the doyad with nobody assigned to it. Or we'd have our cruiser down. It was 68,000 miles, being treated as a part-time, as a.
Spare.
As a spare car, which is not the tradition and it's not, you should not allow it. I would say get the most for the insurance, put it in the reserve and do a holding pattern. At least for.
Okay, so do we, all right. Somebody want to craft a motion around that?
I don't think it needs a motion. Just, no action taken.
Okay, so.
All right.
Michelle, anything to add or?
No, that's, no. We'll watch the mileage on the vehicle and if it gets to a point where we need to talk, you know, later in the spring or early summer, then go. The sheriff can come back and talk to you. We'll just put the monies in the reserve ones for now.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Are you prepared to talk about the airport contract, Michelle?
I have it here.
Okay.
Are you ready, is the sheriff ready for action on that?
Yeah, all we need to do is just have some signatures on it, the budget, once now that the budget has been.
Excuse me, Michelle, I need to craft a motion, so I'm going to move to approve the service, the law enforcement contract between the airport, is that it?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Michael, that. So I haven't reviewed that, hasn't seen it. Last thing I knew, sheriff did, when I asked him on Friday, I'd asked him if we had an agreement and he said no. So I'm assuming once he saw it on the agenda and I'd asked him that question, he must have worked on that.
Has he signed it?
He has not signed it.
So I, I haven't seen it, so I can't.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure we should be.
But the, the reason I brought it up and put it on the agenda is because technically the contract ends as of January 1st. So I didn't want you to be any surprised by saying on January 1st, the airport has to be closed because we don't have a contract, we're not going to send anybody over there. Till we have a contract.
So I think we should, I think we should approve the contract, we should sign it, send it, get that to Michelle and.
It should have management review somewhere.
Contract, move on, it's a pretty significant.
If it's a sort of contract and nothing.
It's the exact same contract. The only thing that's changed is the, the, the payment because of the budget increase due to salaries.
Always.
Which was in the budget?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just stating, I haven't seen it. And that's all I'm saying. If you feel comfortable that it's the same contract and all that. I mean, we are under a timetable crunch, which is why I put it on the agenda to make sure that we didn't fall short, so.
I mean, I don't like the practice of approving things that you have as a bit of review by management.
I mean, we're certainly.
Yeah, how about contingent on?
I would say we can wait until the first meeting in January. We're not going to not go down to the airport on January 1st.
The reality is, if it's the same contract except for the dollar miles, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Let's get it, let's get it memorialized. There's no reason to put this off. I mean, if the sheriff doesn't sign that, bring it back and we'll discuss it.
No, I agree with you, but moving forward.
Well, it's time to, crap happens.
Contracts from January 1st of 2024 expires on the 31st of 2024. In the, the, in the calendar year 2024, the airport agrees to pay the sum of Get it out again. 217,647. And monthly installments.
Now, it's for the calendar year of 24, is that it?
Yes, that's correct.
There's no other changes on the contract, right?
Everything else is exactly verbatim.
So gentlemen, my motion is to move to approve the law enforcement contract agreement between Hancock County Sheriff's Department and the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport for the calendar year of 2024 as presented.
Well, it's not presented because we don't have it, but.
I was about to say.
How about as outlined or something?
Well, you, you just presented it.
Okay.
I have seconded.
That's seconded. Any further discussion?
So can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Michelle, is that the number you gave me in my budgeting process? I, I just don't have it in front of me.
No, it would have changed a little bit because Monica, we had to move some people around in the contract with Chief Deputy Mahon moving from the airport. So we have replaced that with a, with another deputy. So that number has changed some and also some of the workers' comp rates have changed.
So wasn't the num, why am I thinking 196,000? It was the number you gave me originally?
Uh, we, the commissioners signed a union contract. We, the commissioners signed a union contract, and that was a six percent increase for salaries. That's also the difference.
All right, so that, that was not in the effect in my budget, but we can cover it with reserves. So I, I was using the one ninety-six whatever and change number when I did my line for, for security.
Two seventeen.
Yeah, because I was looking at an increase of about twelve thousand dollars originally, and now we're talking another almost twenty thousand dollars, but that's okay, you know, we'll, we'll make it work.
I'm sure the sheriff's office would gladly cancel the contract down there.
Again, one more reason to have this in front of us, but we're under the gun, but. Is there a motion on the floor and has been seconded, is that correct?
Yeah.
We're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Again, it should be in front of us.
I will leave it with Patrice for you to sign. I'll throw it to you to sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jill, discuss contract with AMHC for mental health services.
My one. Believe you, I, I'll take. Your project was.
Yes.
For, for the commissioner, so hopefully you got that email. Please, depending on the staff.
Good news.
Yes. I apologize, I got here late. I had a phone call, so I don't have that number with me that we were discussing earlier, the thirty? Thirty-six.
Is this for the contract?
Yes, for mental health.
You, you don't even have the contract?
They have not, they were supposed to provide that, they haven't provided that yet.
Can we put this off until contracts in front of us?
Yep.
So I think in concept, we can approve this concept to be paid from, from upper funds.
No, it's not.
I mean, I mean, the opioid, opioid.
Self, self.
Sorry, right. And we'll take action when you bring the contract back to us?
I asked them to have it here today, and they did not.
But good work, thank you, gentlemen. I'll say that, that's, that was good news.
And me, Michael's been off, I've been busy. We only have time to sit down and discuss the nurse. And possibility of not, so we can put that off also.
Great, so we're up to approval to hire.
Okay, I'm going to move to hire Jace Ellerin of Lowell, Maine. Part-time corrections officer on call as needed without benefits at pay grade nine A effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Seconded. Moved and seconded.
Here we move into the area.
Where, where's Lowell?
Where's Lowell?
I didn't even know, no, it sounds like they're in Augusta, where they think.
I don't know, but he said he could get into Bangor. And feel. Holland and feel.
Lowell?
Yeah.
So he said he'll be moving this. He worked in Bangor now, he doesn't have any issue, but.
Sounds like a village in, well, it could be a village, you know, like some, some island.
Because we have two full-time vacancies, and I'm not going to anybody direct. I mean, he works out the other, the full-time position, so.
Oh, great.
She was trying to do highest of part-time people, see if they're going to work out before we.
Great, hopefully things are looking up.
Hopefully.
Oh.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous, thank you.
I'm going to move to approve hiring Keith Trundy of DRL's part-time corrections officer on call as needed without benefits at pay grade nine A effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Seconded, moved and seconded, same, sounds like the same scenario.
They're trying to work and see if they like it at all.
Great, thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, uh, Nanny Robinson. She was full-time and got done, or it's part-time, and she's coming back full-time, is that, was that?
Oh, no, 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 that's not. Yeah, you talked to our.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm sorry.
But I would like to say one good thing, after twenty years, Hancock County had its first high stat GED graduate last week, so. We had, we had a graduation ceremony in the facility. Families commend, mother commend to be part of it, sorry.
In May or crypto?
In May.
Corrections.
Wow. Do we have to put a picture so I can go to the website?
So. We had the first graduate after all these years, finally got through the system.
So how, can you, I, I hate to take meeting time, but can you give us like a two-minute, uh, that? So there's a program.
Yeah, this is high, so we go through adult ed, Alzra, adult ed, they've been with us for twenty years also. A lot of times we get to the point, they move on to the, the release, so they move on to DOC and finish there. This is the first one that we actually had here.
Did they start and finish here?
Yes, you did, yeah.
Have they had to say you had it long?
No. Of course, it's just so slow, they've been here eighteen months.
Well, that's the damn.
That's a bad, yeah, but.
Well.
He matches his campground, his cake and ice cream, so we had to.
Oh, that's great.
Maybe you might have a picture if you took it.
Yeah.
Well, if it, if it, if it's a lot, if the person would be willing to have a picture.
He signed the media release, it's script to be right up in the paper also, but. Very, very good, so, so, so.
Well.
It was a good thing.
That's great, Tim, that's a good story. Thank you.
Okay, now with RCC, I'm going to move to approve promoting part-time dispatcher Madison Robichaud from Orland to full-time dispatch effective at Step E. December thirty.
Yeah, so she was at Step E originally, and so it's for a place, she went from full-time to part-time, took another job, and has decided she'd like to return, is full-time, and Bob wanted to put her back where she was originally, where her full-time placement was for her years of service.
How long's she been out?
Uh, couple of years, but she's been working part-time. Because she has her skills, and she still has all her certifications.
Well, I, I'm more than willing to give her a Step E, just, you know. Remember, anytime we violate that contract, even though it, it's better than the contract, we stand, you know, risking the agreements from the union, because they could say, look what we can do without the unit, you know what I'm saying? So I don't think the contract allows, Step E doesn't.
I do not have it in front of me. We were just trying to re, put her back to the same step she was when she had left originally.
I know what you're trying to do, I'm just saying, can we do that?
Of course.
I guess the issue becomes, under the, agenda coming up in a couple spots here. The new agreement allowed for the commission to do that, I believe, up to Step E.
Yeah.
Under the one to be signed that would be effective at, as of October first, so I guess it depends on the direction you're going with that agreement. If you can approve that agreement, you consider that to be retroactive to October first.
It is, right.
Then.
True, a piece of cake, right.
Then it would be okay. Under that, that's obviously contingent upon what action you're taking in the agreement.
Yeah.
We'll have to revisit it if we don't sign the agreement or that doesn't work, but I think that's, that's exactly what I wanted to do. Yep. So I'm going to stand by my motion to pay her Step E.
And then it's the RCC fully staffed.
Ben?
The RCC will then be fully staffed.
Okay, wow, that's more good news.
Go, wait, I'll second it, Michelle.
Yeah, I was waiting for a second, but moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous. IT?
I'm going to move to approve sending Banyan Jarvis in dispatcher all the means for Spillman Training and to use upper funds to pay for those costs.
Only after we've joined the compact. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So unanimous.
So this is the contract you were just alluding to.
Yeah, so this is the, we were notified, and again, we didn't, the last meeting, they said, you know what, we're, we're okay with proposed changes that were supposed to be. So we never really, either party never really signed anything in P A, but they were okay with it. They took it back, membership, and he indicated to us that I can afford you that with rats by. Uh, so now we'll be back in the commissioner's lab. I sent you a copy of, I understood be what the agreement would be with all those changes incorporated into it. And if you're in agreement, then that, that would be the next step. Feel comfortable with it, I mean, it seems to be what, what you, what we indicated, and I, you know, as long as all of you had a chance to look at it, you're comfortable with it.
Well, I looked at it not through your lens, but, you know, is this what we talked about?
And I believe the other two staffers have seen that as well, or have looked at what we propose, is that okay, so we're not had a chance to. All right, so forget that part.
So I'm going to move to approve the agreement between Teamsters Union Local Number Three Forty and the County of Hancock for the Hancock County Regional Communications seven nine one one Dispatch Center Unit at the time period of October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six as presented. Seconded?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael?
Just there are two comments for everybody's fun.
All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Discussion with Charlie and Representative of Group of, of Three Rivers, Somerville, Seer, Gotti, Tiff, and Communicate, and Community Benefit Agreement proposal. Miller, do you?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Wagner's on there, I think he might want to start the conversation. He, he has met with the representatives, he has something that they wanted to propose, and I guess turn it over to him.
This is no.
Yeah, yeah, good morning. Apologies for the name there, that, that's my associate. I'm balancing between a, a couple items with the storm. Uh, so, uh, my name is Stephen Wagner, not Ryan. So I, what, what I was hoping to do was just update the commissioners that the last, uh, we, we left, uh, I, I've since gone back, uh, with the representatives for Three Rivers, and they have agreed to uh, the counterproposal that you authorized me to make of a sixty-forty split on the TIF with a thirty-year CBA at thirty thousand, which is an increase of uh, ten thousand, uh, over the last offer, so. With that, I believe we've, we've reached an agreement that is consistent with uh, what the, the commissioners had, had hoped for in order to put this forward to the next steps. Um, so that's where we're at now, is I just want to confirm that we're, we're ready to move forward. Uh, in which case, the next steps will be, the representatives from Three Rivers will, uh, prepare the, um, TIF Development Program documents, the Credit Enhancement Document, and the Community Benefit Agreement Document. We'll review those internally and work with staff to uh, build out the list of projects and to build out the maps to accompany that and bring that. So I anticipate, uh, two additional meetings, so one meeting will be to review those drafts uh, together as a group, and then, uh, at that point, we'll, uh, schedule the, uh, public hearings. So the second meeting will be a public hearing followed by a vote of the commissioners, uh, to, uh, establish the TIF and authorize the county to enter into the, uh, Community Benefit Agreement and Credit Enhancement Agreement.
Great, any, you don't need any action from us today?
I, I do not, uh, there was, I do believe we have representatives from Three Rivers. If you had any questions or if they had um, anything to add to what I said, hopefully I, I did capture the, uh, the numbers accurately, as I, we're having some systems issues, and so I don't have them in front of me, but I think I see Phil Sossiers.
Yep. Anything to add from Three Rivers or?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Phil Sossier from Bernstein Shore, and I work with Three Rivers. Um, I, I don't have anything to add. Stephen accurately captured our discussions, and I think the agreement of a sixty, uh, forty Credit Enhancement Agreement with, uh, with a Community Benefits, uh, Agreement of thirty thousand dollars per year for twenty years. Um, so we're happy to move forward if the commissioners so, so desire, and we'll draft some documents, we've already gotten started on those, and so we'll, we'll finish that drafting and send them over to Stephen for the county's review.
Great, so I just want to make sure that no action needed at this time.
No, no action needed from the commissioners, no.
Well, great, thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to moving this forward.
Great, thank you very much.
Same here.
Okay, next up is the item that was added.
So I'm going to move to go into an executive session on the Title One, Section four oh five subsection. Tell me what that is, Michael, please. Four oh five, four oh five subsection, let's see.
Four oh five, four. No, four oh five. Oh, C would be real acquisition.
Personnel, which one's personnel?
Six A.
Six A?
Yeah. Michael, that. Yeah, that's accurate. Four oh five, six A.
Six A, yeah, Title One, four oh five, six A.
Yeah.
So I'm going to move to go into executive session on, on the Title One, Section four oh five, Subsection six A for a discussion involving the personnel issue.
Seconded. And whereby public discussion could be reasonably expected to cause damage.
Why?
Because that's what law is, but.
Law says you need to tell why you're going to executive session.
Okay, so. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we'll take a break to wind down.